All to order, City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1274, June 20, 2016. Let us stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk call the roll, please.
Mayor?
Here.
Collins?
Here.
Cottle?
Here.
Herbie?
Here.
Holt?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Here.
Southall. Southall?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is item number two, Minutes. Everybody should have received a copy of the minutes. Are there any corrections and auditions to the minutes? Hearing none. We move to item number three, Presentations. First of these Presentations is Business of the Month, Main Source Bank, Forest Park. Mr. Brim?
Mayor, Members of Council, thank you very much. Recently, we learned that Main Source Bank had acquired Chivviet Savings and would rebrand the Forest Park location on West Kemper accordingly. Main Source is a large community bank headquartered in Greensburg, Indiana. They have 91 locations following this acquisition, and company officials are making a substantial investment to rebrand and upgrade the building here in Forest Park. They will have a grand opening event for the new branch on Friday, June the 24th. We wanted to call attention to the company's decision to reinvest here in our community and help them tell our residents about the decision to remain a key member of our growing business community. So tonight, we want to welcome Main Source to Forest Park. I'd like to invite the Business Development Manager, Mr. Mark Moserup from Main Source Bank, to accept the award. We're very happy to have them here in Forest Park.
Thank you. It says, "City of Forest Park, Business of the Month, Main Source Bank, Forest Park, in recognition of the company's contribution to the growth and development of the city of Forest Park." Thank you, congratulations. Take your word for it, sir.
Sure. I'll be pretty brief, didn't know I was going to be speaking. But on behalf of Main Source Bank, just very excited to be here in the community of Forest Park, looking forward to being an active member of the community. That's all I got. Thank you so very much.
Again, congratulations. Thank you very much, sir.
Mayor, Mr. Moser, I just want to tell you that I had a chance to meet with Ms. Detmer, and they had given you a message when you got back out of town traveling. You would give me a call, Sheila Cottle, and I have my $50 ready to go into the checking account.
Oh, great.
So I'll see you tomorrow.
I will see you tomorrow.
Thanks.
I look forward to it.
Me too. You all are awesome.
Thank you, sir. The next item on the agenda on the Presentations would be 20-year recognition. And I would ask Mr. Paul Brim to come forward, please. Paul?
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
A proclamation. Says, "Whereas Paul Brim has served the city for 20 years as a member of our Economic Development Team, and whereas Paul Brim has served in leadership roles with the International Economic Development Council, Mid-American Economic Development Council, the Ohio Economic Development Association, Northern Cincinnati Convention and Visitors Bureau, Hamilton County Convention Facilities Authority, the REDI Cincinnati and Forest Park Chamber of Commerce, thereby bringing honorable recognition to the city of Forest Park, and whereas Paul Brim continually works to grow the profession of economic development by serving on the faculty for the Ohio Basic Economic Development Course and the Ohio Economic Development Association Board of Directors, and whereas Paul Brim has managed an award-winning economic development program here in the city of Forest Park, and has been responsible for more than $375 million in business investments and creations or retention for approximately 6,000 jobs, and whereas Paul Brim received a Career Achievement Award from Cincinnati Chapter of the American Society for Public Administration in 2006, and was recognized by Hamilton County as the Economic Development Professional of the Year in 1999, and whereas Paul Brim is always willing to place his concern for the public good ahead of his professional interests, and thus has earned the admiration and high regard of other civic leaders and the affection of a host of area residents, and whereas Paul Brim's dedicated service has been integral not only to the development of the business community, but to the entire city of Forest Park, having raised more than $1.5 million from outside sources for various city programs and activities. And whereas, as an employee of the city of Forest Park Economic Development Department, Paul Brim is given 20 years of outstanding loyal and dedicated service to the residents and employees of the city of Forest Park. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Charles Johnson, do hereby proclaim Monday, June 20, 2016, as Paul Brim Day in the city of Forest Park, and do hereby urge all residents to join in the recognition and celebration of this most significant occasion. Paul, thank you very much for all you do for us, and congratulate you.
As the liaison to the Economic Development Commission, I would like to present, on behalf of the Forest Park City Council, this plaque in recognizing you for 20 years of outstanding dedication and loyal service to the city of Forest Park.
Well, you could never get me to shut up. So I would like to thank Council. As the mayor mentioned, I'm part of a group that helps teach the Basic Economic Development Course in the state of Ohio. And one of the things that we always teach people coming into the profession is that this job doesn't happen in a vacuum. The only way that you accomplish these projects is by the support of the people you get to work with and the people in your organization. I've been very fortunate over the years to work with an incredible group of people, both as my fellow employees here on the city staff and also councils, past and present, who have been very supportive. I would be remiss if I didn't thank City Manager Hodges for being a good friend and mentor over these many years. As all of you know, I have left and come back, and left and come back. So I really do want to thank Ray, because I've learned a great deal from him over the years, not the least of which, you know, when we talk about the dollars and cents of this job, I think all of us on the city staff, thanks to Ray's leadership, understand the importance of that we're working with taxpayer money and the importance of making sure that taxpayers see a return on that investment with each and everything that we do. And I think that that translates through the entire organization. It's not something that's unique to me. So I'd just like to thank Ray, thank Council. My family is here tonight. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank them. My mother, Pat, who's put up with me for a long time. My brother, John, who's put up with me for an equally long time, almost. Yes, yeah, that's true. I'd also like to thank my daughter Claire, who's here tonight. Claire is a tax associate over in Deer Park, works with Mike Behrens over in Deer Park. I'm very proud of Claire. And my wife, Sherry, who, if anybody puts up with me, it's my wife, Sherry. But I want to thank all of them. My son Nicholas is working tonight, couldn't be here. I think he's on his way here now, and hopefully he's not rushing to get here. I told him to take his time, just go home. But I do want to thank all of you for this. This is a very nice honor. I told you on more than one occasion, I kind of grew up here. I grew up professionally, I grew up personally here. So it's been a wonderful 20 years. And I won't say I'm going to be like Joanne and be here for another 20, but I'm looking forward to it. So thank you.
Comments from Council? Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes. Paul, I'll tell you, as being on the Economic Development Commission for the last few years, it's a real pleasure to work with you. You're incredibly professional. And I see, because of being on the Economic Development Commission, all of the really good work that you do to help retain businesses in Forest Park and help bring businesses to Forest Park. And that's our bread and butter. So thank you so very much. And I don't want to see you leave. I want you around for another 20 years.
I think I've used my night life, so I don't know what anyone...
Anyone else from Council? Mr. Burns?
Yeah. Paul, I just want to congratulate you. You know, growth is a crazy thing. You know, sometimes it's not as direct as you would like it to be. Therefore, you have to go and come back, and go and come back. But that's okay, because every time you came back, you came back better. And that's what growth is all about, right? There are no backward steps in what you did and the things that you've accomplished here. You know, you're a part of the roots of Forest Park. And regardless of what you do, your mark is here for a very, will be here for a very, very long time. Because you just look and you see, you know, you just look at any business and you can say, "Paul Brim, Paul Brim, Paul Brim, Paul Brim," right? Which is great, you know, especially considering the things that we've all had to go through that brought us, that have brought us, made us stronger since 2008, and the challenges that came after that. And we see some of the results of how you've, you know, effectively till the land so that we can have fruit today, you know, which is a phenomenal job. Thank you for being here.
Councilwoman Cottle?
Paul, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your leadership on the Forest Park Chamber of Commerce Board. I have the privilege of serving on that with you. And our president has had some personal issues, and you've stepped up to the plate and made us all work hard. So I want to thank you for that. And in talking to your mother and brother, your mother said that you've always talked, and your brother said that he tried to shut you up, but you were difficult to shut up because you are an awesome person. So you've got quite a family here, and we...
I'm not the awesome person. He's trying to shut me up, I think, just a little bit.
Well, I'll do the big A on that. And thank you for having the golf pros there, because the golf pro said, "I'll spend time with Paul, because he's good, Sheila, not so much just practice." Okay, I will. So thank you for everything you do. Appreciate you.
Anyone else? Mr. Southall?
Yes. Paul, congratulations. And I hope you do 20-plus more years.
Yes.
But make a promise to me that you'll straighten out that white elephant before you go.
That's our next big problem.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Councilwoman Holt?
Paul, I just wanted to say... He finally didn't fly over me anymore. Paul, I just want to say congratulations on your 20 years and thanks for being a great asset to the city of Forest Park. And I'm glad you did come back again during my tenure. Congratulations.
Yes, I wanted to say congratulations. And even before I got on Council, the conversations that we had about economic development were truly a learning experience. Every time I talk to you, I learn something. That's why I like grabbing you and talking about the many different upcoming events and businesses coming into Forest Park. Thank you for being a teacher and unlocking a lot of the information that you unlocked for me.
Paul, you and I have spent a lot of time having a lot of conversations about a lot of things. I wish that all, that every citizen in Forest Park would have the opportunity to sit down at some point and talk to you, and they would have a better understanding of where we are economically, how we got there, where we're going, and how we're going to get there. You know, oftentimes, hear people say, "Well, what are you doing?" You know, people oftentimes want to point to those things are excessively visible, like the mall, and say, "Well, you aren't doing anything." But I know over all these years, these, God, I don't know how many years, Paul, since mid-'90s, that you and I have worked together in one fashion or another. I see all of the buildings and the businesses that are still in Forest Park, that would not have been in Forest Park had it not been for Paul and his team and the other members of staff. And wearing the other hat as a member of the Planning Commission, I also get to see buildings and businesses when they come in at the very ground floor. And they have that, you know, they have that stamp that, you know, "We've talked to Paul, and here's where we are." That gives me more information and more knowledge of how we're getting these businesses and how we're keeping them. It's not an easy job. I know when we, years ago, we had a person who was doing only retention, and you had tried to impress upon Council at that time how important it was to have that person. And some of us at that time didn't see it, because all we were looking at were, "Well, that's another employee." But because of that foresight, you know, I know personally four or five businesses that were going to leave that did not leave. And the big one to me was what we've done very recently with Ameritas. Had it not been for Paul Brim, we would have had a greater white elephant sitting up there on Mill Road, because that white elephant, that business being a white elephant would have cost the city far, far, far more in loss than the mall is ever going to cost us. You know, bigger doesn't always mean better. And that's another thing I learned from Paul. You know, I'd rather go out, rather have Paul to go out and bring in an engineering firm of 10 people, as he so often does, than to have 300 people working at below minimum wage. So that's what we see, that's what we see on the Planning Commission, that's what we see here, and that's what we see in the Economic Development Commission. And I think credit ought to be given where credit is due. That's due in large part to your efforts. And I know you spend a lot of time at it. If Paul has any one quality, I'd say that great quality is Paul listens to everybody, and he makes everybody that's talking to him feel like they're just as important as the next person.
Amen.
And that's great. Thanks again, Paul.
We will now move to item number four on the agenda, that item being communications from the public. At this time, normally, people who, you know, if there are people who need to leave and do not wish to stay, feel free to do that. We're going to get now into the part where the public can speak. But thank you, feel free to leave. We won't feel badly about it. Item number four, communications from the public. This is a time for citizens to comment on matters before Council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped and recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to five minutes. So if there's anyone here who would like to address Council, please come up to the podium. There should be a sheet and a pen there for you to sign in. So if you would sign in and tell us who you are, and then state your question or concern, please.
My name is Beverly Troutman, and I am a resident of Forest Park. I have resided here for more than 25 years. I just live a couple of streets over, here with a couple of other neighbors that live in the B section. And we are here to voice our concerns about the tax rate that Forest Park has. I wrote a letter about that tax rate last year. And I have another letter that I'm going to pass down to the Council verbalizing my concerns about the tax rate in Forest Park that's taxed to residents. And I will read it to you today. One disclaimer, I'm not a finance major. So I worked off of this southwestern Ohio Municipal Tax Office roster dated 10/1/14, trying my best to understand it. So if I made some errors, it's because of lack of understanding of this big document, which I'm sure all of you have seen. But I've done my best to try and understand it and to put some data here. I wrote a letter last year regarding my concerns about the tax structure, and I've decided to write once again. I believe that the tax structure Forest Park Council instituted for residents of the city of Forest Park effective 2014 is unfair. The 0.375 income tax for Forest Park residents has increased from the 1.5 tax credit that was previously initiated. I'm fully aware that municipalities must have funds to operate and keep up with the maintenance as well as make necessary structural improvements within the city. I was walking around today, I did see that you are paving the tennis court, and I know you have to have money to do all the things that are required for the city. So I understand that Forest Park must charge taxes. However, the taxes that Forest Park is charging is not really comparable to all the other taxes that are being charged for other municipalities and neighboring communities. In the Forest Park newsletter, there was a statement that read, "Finances have improved in Forest Park." And I would think so, because for the last couple of years, we've been taxed a little higher. While I know the city needs money, overtaxing hard-working residents, I do not feel is the best option. High taxes are discouragement to working residents living in the area. The mayor's statement in the March newsletter said that home foreclosures are a concern in this community. I venture to say that with such a high tax structure, even more foreclosures are likely to take place, making this even a greater concern in the future and bringing down home values in the area. Forest Park residents are paying taxes more, as I said, more than other municipalities such as Butler County. And in prior years, we were competitive with that 1.5 credit. And now this 0.375 credit is just, is higher than what other municipalities are charging their residents. Forest Park has several apartment complexes with young, working millennials residing there. And I would think you would want to encourage these resident apartment dwellers to purchase homes and remain in the city. When I came up here to pay my taxes, some of them were just appalled when they learned that the tax... "Oh, my God," they were saying, as I sat here, you know, waiting to talk to... "Oh, my God." They were just stunned that they had to pay these taxes. And I'm sure you know that I can go right up the street here, Green Hills, I can go to Fairfield, I can go to Westchester, and not have to pay these taxes. But I've lived here 25 years. I have five years to pay my house off, and I'll be retiring in two years. So it doesn't impact me as much as it would a younger person. So I'm speaking on their behalf, as well as other people that I've spoken with. And so I think these taxes are going to be a disadvantage for the city in the long run, because it's not an incentive, it's a disincentive for living here. And I'll go down to my last paragraph. In my opinion, and many people that I stand here on behalf of, I would like for you to revisit this tax formula, reverse the decision, go back to the one we formally had. I appeal to Forest Park City Council to look toward reversing these taxes. My neighbor, two houses down from me, just moved out. And I said, "Why are you moving?" And he said, "The taxes here are simply too high." And he'd only lived there two years. I also have a coworker who owns a house somewhere over here in Forest Park. She moved out. She said, "But her house is still here, she's renting it out." So I'm thinking that maybe renters are going to be coming in more. So I just would like to ask Forest Park to please revisit this tax structure, maybe think of a way to... Once you have enough money to do the things that we need to do for some improvements, maybe go back after that to the, make it time-limited or something. Because it's really unreasonable. And I'm listening to people I go to church with, I'm listening to my neighbors. And your residents are not happy about the tax structure here in Forest Park. And if I were young, I would not live here. And my young, my children do not live in this community. So I would like for you to reconsider the tax structure and think about how you can make it more comparable to the neighboring communities right up the street who are not charging residents as much taxes as Forest Park. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you very much for coming. We've heard your comments. And anytime that we do budget, we look at the tax structure, and we will continue to do that.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment, please.
Yes, Councilwoman Cottle?
Ms. Troutman, thank you for your information. I voted against that tax increase. And as a City of Forest Park Councilwoman for 13 years and a resident for 45, raising our two sons here, I have paid the price for my no vote. So thank you for bringing this up, and I will look at it and concur.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Anyone? Sign in and tell us who you are, please.
I asked Forest Park, I went up there, I said, "How did you, how did you come up with this?" And they said, "We gave the Council several options, and this is the option that they chose." So I don't think that you were considering the residents as much, because we are very displeased. People from my church, people and my neighbors, we're very displeased.
Which church?
I'd rather not say.
Okay.
I would just like to say...
That your church and your neighbors.
That they are not happy about the tax structure in Forest Park.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Burns?
Hello, my name is Marie Chappell. I'm here with my husband, Anthony Chappell, and my neighbor within another community of Forest Park, Ms. Troutman. I'm here, not as prepared as she, I might say, but this is rather spontaneous for me. But I'm going to try to cover what I need to say very briefly in respect of your time. We've lived in Forest Park in three different locations since 1994. And so we were apartment dwellers, and we've been homeowners. And so now we're living on Bessinger Drive. And not only are the taxes very, very, very hard for us, my husband has since become disabled. I've become part-time as opposed to full-time. My house is basically upside down. And I cannot sell my home for more than one reason. The tax structure is just making that terribly impossible right now, because I know nobody's going to buy my house if I'm already upside down. And with the tax structure, that's just another negative. And not only that, we have neighbors that we've complained about repeatedly that live on the side of our home on McElvy, and they make the living situation even worse. We've repealed this, we've come up to these courts, we've talked about this several times, and we still have the same problem. Now, I'd like to tag what Ms. Troutman has said. Forest Park is going to eventually come very blighted, because what's going to happen is taxpayers are going to not choose to live here. And then you'll have the ones who do not have to pay taxes living here, and then the income will dwel, I guess, become eliminated or very minimal. And so there, that's where you'll have the problem. With, you know, my value of my home is very, very, is terrible. It is very, very terrible. And I have a very nice home. I built my home in Forest Park in an older community. But when I built my home, we had equity on the top, so we did refinance once. And now with the economic crisis of 2008, I know that has to have something to do with it, but I know that it shouldn't have that much to do with it. Nobody wants to live in Forest Park. I worked with a gentleman who lived in Loveland. And he, as a matter of fact, I worked with a real estate and appraisal company several years ago. And he told me then, he said, "People who live in Forest Park are getting, excuse me, gypped." And I don't mean to be offensive with that term. But he said, "Just because you're buying less house, you're paying more taxes, and you don't get the value out of them." So I'd just like for you to... I can't reemphasize or emphasize enough how important this matter is, and it really needs to be taken under serious consideration. Because my children, too, are young adults now, and they have no desire to live in Forest Park. My son just built a house in the city down here in Northside. And he was always raised in the suburbs, but he chose to live in the city versus living out here in Forest Park for one of those very main reasons. So I just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who wants to address the Council? Mr. Brim?
I'm sorry, I know this is a long... It could be a while, but I did want to let you know that my son did make the trip down from Kings Island. So I just want to introduce Nicholas to all of you. So he didn't want me to do that, but that made me want to do it even more[1730.16] So he didn't want me to do that, but that made me want to do it even more when I learned he didn't want to do it. So that's my son Nicholas.
Thank you, Paul.
Nicholas, thank you for coming from such a wonderful family. Thank you for all the things you do. And anytime you want to go back over and play the guitar, I'm over by Dayspring, you feel free at the, what's the name of the one by Dayspring?
Underground.
Hmm?
Underground.
Underground, come back, and I'll bring the crowd to see you again. Thank you so much. How do you like Kings Island?
Oh, good.
Good, what are you doing there?
I'm on my way to the finisher.
Congratulations. Thank you for coming. I know you're proud. Paul also says he's proud of you, he may not tell you that, though.
Okay, we'll move on to item number five, reports of standing committees. First of these committees is Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Cottle.
Not much to say, except the TASER piece is very important, and I just continue to be in contact with, with the Fire Department and the Police Department.
Any questions for Councilwoman Cottle? Hearing none. I have any items on the agenda for public safety for next week for the work session on the 27th, and I assume that there's none to add. Next council report is Ways and Means Committee, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I do have a few things. First of all, the annual tax incentive review council meeting is this Thursday, and that's the countywide vehicle for reviewing our tax incentive proposals in Forest Park. And so that will be taking place then. Also, the open house that Paul spoke about for the Main Source Bank, this Friday, June 24th, is from 3:00 to 6:00. You are invited to attend that. Also, the chamber's golf outing will be in July of 20, July 20. I also wanted to say that, yes, the general fund is in balance, and I want to be modestly optimistic about it. The fire fund also, if you recall, we did a number of resolutions to transfer money to float that until we received the property tax money. It was delayed by the implementation of some procedures at the county. And it was indicated that that was received on June 14th. It was not in the summary in your departmental reports, but it should probably be in the next one. And then finally, I wanted to also mention that the urban land assistance program grant, we've received that to redevelop the activity center area, and that, I don't know if that also extends to the Cameron Park site that is adjacent to that, but I wanted to also indicate that we have received that. So things are moving forward in Forest Park. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Herbie, Ways and Means? Hearing none. Councilwoman Herbie, I have no items on the agenda for you for the 27th. Do you have anything to add?
No.
Next for me to report is Community Development, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report. However, if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to respond.
Any questions for Mr. Burns? Hearing none. Mr. Burns, do you, will the tennis court be finished? Can you give us some update next meet, next work session? The work session, where we are with the tennis court?
Sure.
Okay. I'll just write it in as tennis court. Next report would be Law Committee, Councilwoman Collins.
I have no report for the Law Committee at this time, but I, I do have, am available for questions if anyone has any.
Any questions for Councilwoman Collins? Hearing none. The next report would be Human Resources, Councilwoman Holt.
I do not have a report tonight, thank you.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Collins, did you have any items for the work session on the 27th? Do you have any items to put on the agenda for the work session on the 27th?
Not a, no.
Councilwoman Holt, do you have any items for the work session on the 27th?
No, I do not.
Next report is Public Improvement and Facilities, Councilwoman Southall.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to refer to a recent event, and this was also coming out of the Hilltop Press. A dedication ceremony for Two Habitat for Humanity Greater Cincinnati Homes were Saturday, May the 21st, in Forest Park. The home at 11418 Fremingham Drive and 11421 Ken Road were the two structures. These two homes are the latest collaborative effort between Ohio National and Habitat for Humanity of Cincinnati, Ohio. The Ohio National is funding, is funding two, these two houses for, as a part of a total donation of more than a half million dollars made in 2014. Since 2009, Ohio National has donated more than $1.3 million to Habitat for Humanity. So we're honored to be a part of that situation. To qualify for these Habitat Homes, families must meet a variety of criteria. Work between volunteers from Ohio National investing more than 500 hours of sweat equity in the construction of these homes. Habitat for Humanity Greater Cincinnati will sell the home to families with a zero percent 30-year interest-free mortgage. So I'd like to acknowledge that and applaud that. That's the end of my report. If there's any questions-
Any questions for Mr. Southall? Hearing none. Mr. Southall, do you have any items for the agenda for the 27th?
Not at this time, sir.
There's one item that would be on the Public Improvement and Facilities, and that item would be ordinance and agreement for improving West Sharon Road. Next item on the agenda for report is Internal Government Relations and Communications Committee, that's mine, I have no report. We'll move to item number six, the mayor's report. I would just say, under the mayor's report that we, as we'll be talking about in the, there will be a motion on the floor for recess, and we will be following the same traditional pattern that we followed in the past. That would, in my report, I will answer any questions if there are any. The, before I go to the City Manager's Report, I just want to, just one statement that I want to make regarding the issue of taxes. I think it's very important that people understand and recognize the differences between types of taxes. Real estate taxes as opposed to income taxes. Real estate taxes are set by, the vast majority of that is related to the school district and their village. So the city would have very little control over that. And I think oftentimes, people think, you know, they think of taxes, they think of just the word taxes in general that covers everything. That's not the, that's not the way it works. Next item on the agenda, the City Manager's Report, Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. I'll just quickly report that the departmental reports were completed, placed on file with the Clerk of Council, and available for public inspection. And then, second, we had a very major, I guess sheriff supervised set out of a house over on Bessenger, and-
Brunswick.
Excuse me, Brunswick, thank you. And it was major, probably the largest we've seen in Forest Park. I don't recall the exact address, but it was-
On what street?
Right of the corner, Brunswick.
Okay.
But in any case, I want to thank the Public Works Department for jumping in and basically cleaning that up, because the way things were, it would have been probably scattered over four or five blocks, because a lot of the stuff was set out. And as you can imagine, a lot of paperwork, a lot of stuff that's just going to blow in the wind soon as the storm hits. But we had our supervisors and our inspectors assisting the general labors. And without them, we couldn't gotten it done, because they're, while getting in a lot of details, it was just a problem getting a dumpster from Rumpke, there was a problem in terms of having an owner being responsible, because it's an out-of-town owned bank that has this property. It would have been a disaster. So again, it's all cleaned up now, and we appreciate their, their work. And I think the record should just show, that's everybody from the department head all the way to, as I say, our general construction inspector jumping in and making it happen that we were able to get it cleaned up.
Any questions for a City Manager? Hearing none. We'll go to, next item on the agenda would be other reports, this is item number eight. The first of these other reports would be the Law Director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Probably the most significant thing that I'd been involved in the last month was involving on-court lounge, and as most of you know, the lounge closed. They did retain an attorney to address the complaint I had filed for preliminary and permanent injunction. The attorney and I worked out an agreement that will soon be signed and filed with the court. Basically, it's an agreement that the operator of that location will never operate again at that location. I also learned that the operator gave up their liquor license, so I'm not sure where that limited liability company could operate, if they've permanently lost that license or it's a temporary matter. But they certainly will not be operating at that location anymore.
John, is that because the liquor license renewed this year?
I never saw renewal come into this city, so-
This year, it was all, all liquor license had to be renewed.
But, you know, usually, the city's notified, so I can't answer the question.
Oh, interesting.
That's the end of my report, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for the Law Director? Hearing none. The next report will be Clerk of Council, Mrs. Huffman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report this evening.
Any questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing none. Thank you, Mrs. Huffman. Item nine, new business. I think these, both these have to, would have to be read in full. The first new business item is Resolution Number 21-2016. Would the clerk please read that resolution in full?
Resolution Number 21-2016, a resolution consenting to the execution of a redevelopment incentive agreement between Red Leonard Associates, Inc. and the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Whereas, the City of Forest Park has identified the recruitment of new businesses, new businesses and redevelopment of existing buildings as priorities for its economic development program. And whereas, Red Leonard Associates, Inc. plans to invest approximately $3 million to acquire and renovate a vacant building in the Kemper Metal Business Center, bringing 58 jobs to our community. And whereas, the Economic Development Department has determined that an incentive is required to help this company complete all facets of their plans to renovate and reposition this important property. And whereas, the Economic Development Commission has reviewed this project and expressed its support for the proposed redevelopment incentive, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that the Council of the City of Forest Park hereby gives its consent for the city manager to enter into an incentive agreement with Red Leonard Associates, Inc. to facilitate and the renovation of a building at 1340 Kemper Metal Drive. Specifically, the City of Forest Park will provide two redevelopment grants to be paid as follows. $5,000 in 2016 and $15,000 in 2017. The City of Forest Park will also provide the company with an earnings tax rebate of 50% of the withholdings reported to the Forest Park, to Forest Park for one year 2017. The estimated value of this incentive is approximately $43,833. Section two, that the resolution shall be in full force and take effect from and after the earliest date allowed by law.
Is there a motion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I move adoption of Resolution Number 21-2016.
Second.
It's moved in second, that we adopt Resolution 21-2016. Is there any discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
No, I really have nothing to add. All the relevant information was in the resolution as read.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, with the clerk call the roll on Resolution 21-2016.
Burns?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Resolution 21-2016 passed 7-0. Next item on the agenda, new business is item B, Resolution Number 22-2016. Would the clerk please read that resolution in full?
Resolution Number 22-2016, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with TASER International for the purchase of 20 tasers and accessories for use by the Police Department. Whereas, it is the desire of the Council of the City of Forest Park to authorize the purchase of 20 tasers and accessories for use by the City of Forest Park Police Department. And whereas, said tasers and accessories are only available from TASER International in Phoenix, Arizona, a sole source provider, and it has become necessary to replace outdated and obsolete tasers due to expirations in wear and tear of the equipment. And whereas, the city is entering into the contract purchase in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 307.86b2, as an exception to the competitive bidding process, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section one, that the formal bidding process for the purchase of 20 tasers and accessories for use by the Police Department is hereby waived. Section two, that the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to enter into an agreement with TASER International for the purchase of 20 tasers and accessories in the approximate amount of $20,811.30. This includes a one-year factory warranty and $550 worth of discounts. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force and take effect upon its passage.
Is there a motion? Councilwoman Cottle?
Yes, I move to support Resolution Number 22-2016. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Second?
It's been moved in second, that we adopt Resolution 22-2016. Is there discussion, Councilwoman Cottle?
No, I think we covered all of that in the work session.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll on Resolution 22-2016?
Collins?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Resolution 22-2016 passed at 7-0. Next item on the agenda, new business is item C, a motion, Mr. Burns.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that council recess from Tuesday, 2nd, 2016 through Sunday, August 11th, 2016.
Correction, September.
September 11th. 11th, 2016. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second that we adopt a motion for the recess to begin August 2nd, 2016 through September 11th, 2016. Is there any discussion?
No, thank you.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item D, a motion, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I move to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to receive the general sum, general fund summary report, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes unanimously. Is there any other business to come before the body? Any other business to come before the body? Hearing none. We are adjourned.